To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again for coming out tonight. I'm gonna start with the approval of the agenda additions, deletions, and corrections. I have a few corrections or deletions. One, we're gonna table, we'll remove L two, the closed session for personnel evaluation. That information may come out to late at noon, so we're gonna table that for the next meeting. L two, I'm gonna remove, under all business, F one, Fire Chief Fitch. My conversations with the fire chief, that was gonna be back about the uniforms, but we weren't providing any information ahead of time, so I'm gonna remove that. Under K one, same thing, Fire Chief Fitch, that was gonna be about a personnel issue, which is some changing of positions, that type of thing, but again, we weren't providing any information ahead of time, so we're gonna delete that. I think in your packet, E number two, the Massey Minor Subdivision, I believe that was added?
Yep.
That is in the packet. That and the left, that came late on Monday, or Tuesday, because the planning and zoning meeting wasn't till Monday night.
Right.
Anybody else?
I will have a CDA update under I two.
Okay.
And I do wanna talk about dropping under K one.
Anybody else have anything, or changes, additions, additions?
I just had some info, I don't know if it's something we wanna put on the agenda, it was just for Saturday.
Let's put it under all business then?
All business.
Okay, that'll be, that'll be our new F one, Dan will update on Saturday.
Okay. It'll be real quick.
Yes, okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Stand, have a second.
I'll second it.
Thanks Doug, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. On the consent agenda, number two, everybody had a chance to read through their packet, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make that motion.
Thanks Sonny, thanks Coy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries, visitors, we have none. Public forum, I do have one card, Melissa Ferris.
Melissa Ferris, two oh four Fourth Avenue Northwest, Casson. I just, I have a few questions about the street assessments, the street work that's being done Northwest Quadrant, that I hope you guys will entertain and answer for me. It's my understanding that we switched from the linear frontage assessment formula to residential equivalency units in an effort to come up with some type of a fairness determination. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I noticed on the schedule that was mailed to me that Erdmans was assessed at four residential equivalency units, even though they don't occupy a full city block, and the work is only occurring on one street that a bunch of their property. Am I correct there, that they're being assessed for four units?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to know why the 1918 limited liability, limited partnership business was assessed at five units? If someone could please clarify that for me.
That was the number that was chosen.
Okay, and the logic behind that?
I think it was gonna be hired with the resort of five.
Okay.
To get into fairness.
To get into fairness?
Yes.
Okay. Who proposed to drop that residential equivalency unit assessment to less than five during the public hearing? Who initially brought it up and asked that that be done?
I made the motion to drop it in half.
But who brought it up when that was being discussed? Last week, two weeks ago, whenever it was?
Yeah, I don't remember.
Don't remember? Okay. But there is a video, someone presumably took a video that I can go back and look at?
I don't know if there's video out there, but there... Yeah, there were some high school kids that were there.
I thought there was somebody videoing it.
We can ask Linda.
Okay.
She's grabbing something.
Bring in the minutes, last year, I think.
Okay.
I don't know if it was brought forward by...
Jerry Geese had submitted the paper, asking for it to be lessened.
Right.
So he's the one that brought it up initially?
Yeah, submitted the written objection.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's why it was talked about separately, because it was one of the written objectives. Now, if you wanna know, 'cause then there was a lot of discussion, and I have that, Council, Chris McAigler made a motion to leave it assessed at five, seconded by Zelinski, motion failed, it was three to two. Mayor McKern made a motion to cut the assessment in half, based on the fact that it's vacant, and this could be a way to help potential business, seconded by Buck, and then it passed three to two.
Who, who were the three that voted for, Linda, if you could tell me?
The three that voted for cutting it is Buck, Forrest, and McKern.
Okay. Gentlemen, who pays for that extra two and a half residential equivalency units that that business is now not going to have to pay?
The entire community.
So, was the decision based then on the fact Erdmans is paying four, because they are a successful business? And the 1918 limited liability, limited partnership is paying for two and a half because they're not a successful business?
I don't know.
Because we're hoping they become a successful business.
Well, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the residential property owners, if they can't afford to pay the assessments on their properties, they can ask for a deferment, so that in the event that the business, or excuse me, the property is eventually sold, a lien will be attached to the property that will be paid out of the sale proceeds. Is that correct? Do I understand the deferment process correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a reason that that wasn't done for this property?
I just, I made the recommendation to lower it a half, because of future development, as we're trying to get more development in town, appear to be consistent, that's kinda the help development, starting to be successful.
So, the taxpayers then are subsidizing this vacant property's assessment for the pavement that runs all the way around the property?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. From the hearing, committee report, the left final flat, which is in your packet.
Yep, and there is a resolution, that was the condition, some of them have been met, but all of them will be met. As part of your approval.
And this was sent to us by planning and zoning, correct?
Yep.
You use it?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution, approving the final flat of the left subdivision.
I'll make that motion.
Stand, have a second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. E two, Massey Minor Subdivision, that was added after the P and Z meeting as well. So maybe just a little bit of background, if somebody from planning and zoning could provide us a little bit of background, where this is going, what rationale?
Basically what they're doing is they're separating the one parcel that has a house on it, and splitting it using a minor subdivision to be able to split that off from there. There is an agreement to connect to the, the sump basket to the, I forget.
Subdrain?
Subdrain. And the lot is conformed with what the city requires for a lot in that sum.
What they wanna do is sell the house, so they can propose to develop the rest of it, which I felt was excellent, because we need lots, we need building lots, especially by the school.
Just, I wanna understand, I'm making sure, the houses, there's a lot gonna be behind it and a lot beside it, is that how it's going?
There's actually two lots behind it.
Behind it?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know there was one to the west of the two.
Yep.
Yeah, there's gonna be, ultimately, it could be four more lots in there.
Okay.
Right now it's planned as two lots, so...
I, I know where it is, I just was making sure I understood all of it. I always saw it was a big lot there. Yeah. Yep. Two here, that's somebody more than that.
Okay, but now to the, so far as that part of it, that, everybody got that, that, you know, by that one house off, so we go into the staff recommendations? Is that part of the resolution, the staff recommendations?
Actually, the resolution only includes the condition that was approved by the Planning and zoning commission.
And that's the subdrain. So what's the sidewalk issue? So I, the only question I would have on the sidewalks, if anyone knows about sidewalk for future development on the lot that's being developed, is that gonna be considered redevelopment?
Yes.
I consider redevelopment.
Okay, I figured you would. No, I, no, I...
I mean, it's all developed, all the streets are there, right?
So I'm just, I just wanted, where does that fit with our new development requirement, as far as if you do new development, sidewalks are required, right? I don't...
Is there a sidewalk? No, I can't remember.
There's a bike path on the side of the...
No, bike path on that.
There's nothing, on the south side of Sixteenth, there's nothing, until you get way up to fifty-seven with the net.
There's that, just that little bit up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause everything's on the north side, with the bike path that goes all the way out.
Given the school property doesn't have a sidewalk on the south side.
Right. Which, I don't know if they can easily put one in there with that either.
There, there is one.
There is?
Yeah.
But right now, it's just, they had a hard surface, they have to go in the school driveway, then you may...
Yeah.
The bike path comes up, and then you got the loop, and...
Yeah, which is...
I couldn't picture how it looked.
Which isn't the greatest place for kids to be walking, with the bus traffic.
So what's this safe routes to school thing? Is that a... So the safe routes to school, I understand they're developing a plan for having safe routes to school, right?
Right.
But that's just a recommendation, there's no hard and fast, the safe routes to school grant, or whatever that would be, really can't commit to the city or a county, or say you have to put a sidewalk here, that would just be a recommendation?
Well, actually, it's a recommendation from all of the participating parties, so the county did initiate the grant application for the planning grant for safe routes to school, and then the cities of Casson and Manorville, and Cam School participated in that, as well as the city engineers, Mindott Center representative, the county center highway department representative, so, so it's meant to kind, to kind of be the equivalent of a comprehensive plan for making it easier for children to walk in bikes to school, or at least have the option to walk in bike to school. So then, after observing, I think there were two observations of kids coming and going to school, doing some work with the engineers, then it came back with identifying where some of those problem areas were, and this area is listed on the priority list. It was one of the conversations that we had at our last meeting, when we talked about where the priorities in the proper order, and were we addressing the things that were most important. So it is an area of note, and this would certainly be an opportunity to start to add some pedestrian walkways in that area.
And also discussed the planning and zoning, there isn't anything mandating or stating anywhere in this minor subdivision that we can require Masseys to install that sidewalk. It was also discussed that at that time, if there's grants that are available, and that is suggested into that at that time, that becomes a safe route to school, and that, that part of the money would be kicking in at that point in time, and looked at it at that time. So, we discussed it fairly heavily, and I do believe it was unanimous.
Right, Lonnie?
Yep.
You're east of both of them on their roads, right? That go to the south there?
Yeah, yeah.
So there's nothing across them, probably, is that all either?
No.
And I was out there and observed today, and there was no kids that came across that long, so, I don't know, this afternoon.
The only time I've been out there, quite a few times, I do see kids cut the corner there.
Quite a bit.
But that's only because they're trying to jump whatever traffic's coming, or whatever else, they're just trying to get across to that corner faster. They're not going across at a perpendicular line, jumping the grass and walking there, walking the curb, they're just trying to jump that corner, just like anything else does, so...
My thoughts were, if we need to put in sidewalk here, this is gonna be a while before it's sidewalk, these other two people are gonna have to put a sidewalk, these are already in there. My, my thought was, in the utility easement, if we do go with this safe route to school, the city's almost gonna have to do nothing like that, or something, or sidewalk inside that utility easement, to get it there, to get in compliance, if that ever comes to that point.
And I know the engineers had ideas on that corner of the street, of actually bringing things farther out into the street, the sidewalk per se, to, to make it more square, instead of a round corner, to slow people down. So, I don't know if the sidewalk there is necessary, 'cause you already have the bike path, and if we can continue the bike path on the other side to the corner, you know, make it a uniform. They just wanna slow the traffic down on that corner with all the kids, and you're... That's the biggest thing, it's not necessarily that you need all the sidewalks, you need to utilize the space that you got by squaring off that street. I kinda was talking to, not Brandon, but another engineer from Manorville.
Correct, yeah, part of the, part of the infrastructure plan, and the safe routes to school plan included a bump out, which is what you're referring to there, a bump out at the intersection to help slow down some traffic there, allow the pedestrian units to get out into the intersection, warrant protected by a curb and gutter with the bump out, was one of the recommendations of the planning document. Now, one thing I will point out, in the staff recommendation, so we just, currently at a planning stage now with the safe routes to school program, if we, if we go after some infrastructure funding, which is concrete on the ground, building, building items in the plan, that one of the strings attached with receiving these funds is the city ordinance and subdivision is required to have sidewalk in all, all new developments. So if we proceed down a path of not installing sidewalks in developments, now this is a minor subdivision, that may not be clear on, on where this lies in that discussion, but we could be ineligible for infrastructure grants in the future, to actually put the concrete on the ground to, to construct what we planned for, so, something that I think council should consider.
But then if that's the case, we'd have to go back to the other minor subdivision, or whatever, and say you can go and add a sidewalk in front of your house. Right, Judy?
I don't believe that we have another example of minor subdivision that fits the example.
I don't see how you can call it new development, the house is there, everything's there, there's nothing new about it, it's fifty years old.
Right.
I mean, that's...
And I, and I'll take this, maybe step forward, let's say this, this area is redeveloped, the residual parcel, the existing parcel and the residual property was being minor subdivided, subdivided, if that is developed, and additional houses were installed in that area, could that be considered a development at that time? And I feel that the ordinance would be, sidewalk would be in play at that point, so I notice that the council wanna consider any future development, adding the little missed opportunity, if you will, on the current parcel to add that sidewalk in, could potentially be considered, that's easier said than done, of course, with changing of hands of properties, but, I don't know, that's something that we could look at, at that time, too.
You're kinda saying that you would add it, not necessarily, I mean, we got to discuss new lots, but the three or four future lots would have to have sidewalk, 'cause they're considered new development?
That's the way I would interpret ordinance, correct? So we have sidewalk without that last little chunk out there, the area's been minor subdivided, or is currently proposed to be minor subdivided, so...
What about all the other properties down there, Ron?
Well, if they were to be redeveloped and added additional houses, then the subdivision ordinance would be in play, which requires subdivisions along new developments, so...
What about all the houses that are already existing?
The city does, every year the city has a sidewalk fund, and the city is trying to go out and fix sidewalks, but also install new sidewalks.
And just a few years ago, they were ripping them all out.
I just question whether sidewalk really needs to go, because all it does is lead highways, it leads to Highway fifty-seven, and there's no safe route there.
Actually, up to Highway fifty-seven, you would turn and go west across the fairgrounds on that sidewalk.
But, from our place, on the south side of Sixteenth Street, you go up to fifty-seven, and then from there, along that frontage road, all the way down to where Houston's is, there's nothing but a road, there's no safe route there. That should be more important than this one. If you wanna save route for elementary kids, bring them into Houston's, and then go up there to where the school is, not come all the way up to high school and then come back over, it's ridiculous.
You still gotta, you gotta start...
All right, all right, we're getting, we're getting off topic here. Let's talk about the lot that's being subdivided out. My opinion, I can't, I can't see making somebody put a sidewalk on that house that's been there for years. And that's what we're talking about tonight.
Right.
We're not talking about the other, the lots that are there, that's a conversation we're down the road, and you may be dealing with somebody else sitting up here that you have to talk to, so we can't promise you anything, but, but talking about the lot that's being subdivided out now.
Right, so the resolution that you're considering does not include the sidewalk?
Correct, just the, the hookup to the...
Subdrain.
I'm learning all the terminology, for some, sewer, whatever, water, something else here, Charlie's laughing at me again. So, on that lot, any other further discussion? Sorry, is the resolution...
That subdrain comes over one of them.
That's the way you show, I don't know, Charlie, unless you know anything else.
If it's way down there, two hundred and twenty feet, I'm not doing it then. It does come all the way to the corner, doesn't it? The subdrain?
The subdrain and the catch base.
Yeah.
I'm sure we had a catch base.
I'm sure it goes all the way down. The one set of plans I saw was ended way to the south. Yeah, I, I'm sure it goes all the way down. Yeah, I know, but I haven't seen where it actually should have been put.
It wasn't the best, no.
Okay, any other discussion on the resolution? I'll entertain a motion of some kind.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with the change to connect to the subdrain.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, comments, questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign?
Aye.
Four to one, wanna note that, Linda? Resolution passes. On the G one, new business request for water tower access.
Do you wanna do F one?
Oh, I'm sorry, just, sorry, I skipped over my own handwriting, can't read. F one, Dan has an update.
Uh, just, this Saturday is a city cleanup, the park board is working with the Lions, and they're gonna meet here at City Hall from, and go out and clean up the city, it's from eight to noon, just looking for more help, if anybody's interested. That's all it is, just...
Is that, is that correct, a meeting here, though?
Yep.
Or we change it back?
Uh, it's, oh, Janet always told me it was here, City Hall, eight to, eight to noon, it's on the, I can go read the sign all front, but...
Yep, it's, it's eight to noon.
It should be here.
Right here. Okay, eight to noon, here.
Yeah.
You're otherwise, and come here anyway.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dan, appreciate it. G one, requests for water tower access, Karen?
Yep. Good evening, guys, how's it going?
It's very good.
So, I'm with Minnesota Wi-Fi, I started this business back in April of twenty twelve, so we've been doing this for about five years now. We cover most of Dodge County, and some of our neighboring counties, Olsted, Mauer, Steele, Rice County, and we primarily try to serve rural people outside of city limits, 'cause obviously in town you have two providers available now in the country, most of the time they have one, or no good options for unlimited internet service. But as we've grown over the last five years, we've seen a lot of people in town also start requesting us to serve them within city limits. They're either not happy with the performance, or the price increases of their current provider, or a lack of customer service, depending on, you know, if it's a national company, or, you know, you guys all know that the teaser, or the promotional reach that most providers have, and then they jump up after six months, or twelve months. Many people are, are kind of tired of that, so, our company, customers that signed up five years ago, their prices have still not gone up in five years, what they signed up for is the price they're still paying today, just kind of try to do that and maintain our philosophy, and not jump the price around and things like that, so. Part of that is, we're on the Casson CHS grain elevator right now, which is a two-hundred-foot tower location, that helps us serve part of Casson, and up to ten miles out into the country, south of Casson, and west and east and north as well. To continue growing our service, so we also would like to propose that we talk about access to the, the water tower at the fairground location, that'd help us expand to kind of the northeast portion of Casson, instead of just the, the northwest portion that we're serving now, and then southwest and southeast. Also, three years ago, I think, in twenty thirteen, when the Casson Aquatic Center opened, I proposed that we, in our company, Minnesota Wi-Fi, would install free Wi-Fi throughout the park, so we do have a hundred percent coverage within the park, the pool area, to the East Shelter, the West gazebo, and then to the North Shelter, covering the baseball diamonds. We've invested eight thousand dollars in that network so far, at no cost to the city or its residents, and we're also looking to upgrade that and spend an additional four thousand dollars this year, to upgrade that network, due to the high utilization from residents and visitors to the community. We have kept track of usage over that network, and last year during the summer months, we saw, on average, thirteen hundred devices a week connect to that network, and over, from May to October of twenty sixteen, we had over twelve thousand unique devices connect to our free Wi-Fi service within the park area. I think that's huge, I think that's data that's showing people are coming to the park, you know, they're using the internet, but, just really, I mean, that data that we have is invaluable also for the city to kind of keep track of some sort of attendance to the park. Obviously, without data like that, you're just guessing how many people show up there, but with that hard data, at least people that pull out their phones and connect to the network, we are seeing, you know, how many devices, at what time of the day, what days of the week are the busiest, that's all data that we can trust, provide and share back to the city if that's ever of interest to you guys, to try to keep track of some sort of attendance to that park during those times. We also find that today's generation, they are glued to their phones, and their screens, and their tablets. What, what I've seen, just kind of being in the park, I see, you know, the, the kids, and they're on their devices, they're hanging out at the gazebo, they go play, and, you know, I, I feel like maybe having that in the park brings them to the park, instead of sitting at home in the basement, and, you know, just kind of being at home, so, I, I feel like it brings them there because they have access to it, they're gonna use it anyway, so why not have them use it in the park where they can hang out and be part of the community a little bit, and bring, bring other friends there, so. It's, like I said, heavily utilized, and we're basically at capacity, we've done three upgrades since we started it, so basically almost an upgrade a year, and it continues to be completely hammered, basically, especially during festivals in the park, when we have a huge influx of visitors, so. The water tower here, what we're proposing basically, is our standard five-year term, which we've done with all our tower locations, whether it's a grain light like CHS, a water tower in Wannamingo or West Concord, which we're on those sites now, or a silo owned by a farmer, you know, out by Oxbow Park, for example, we brought internet down into the Oxbow area where they had no other options recently. So part of that allowing us to, getting on this water tower would allow us to expand our own internet service to more homes in Casson, but also provide a much-needed bandwidth upgrade to the Casson Memorial Park for our free Wi-Fi network. Currently, we're feeding that from a tower six miles away, north of Manorville, because that has line of sight to the park right now, whereas to CHS, there's a lot of trees in the way, so we're not able to feed it from right in town where our fiber is. So, getting on that water tower gives us a line of sight connection directly into the park, and we can bring in twenty times more bandwidth than we do today. So, just trying to stay ahead of the demand here, and, and make this a useful service for the city and its residents. Our proposal here, which is similar to other cities that we're on for the water towers, we're proposing to keep, continue providing the free Wi-Fi to the aquatic center area and the surrounding park, and provide that additional four thousand dollars in investment, and then upgrade the bandwidth, as well as providing free forty megabit per second internet connections to, you know, city buildings and offices, so, here, fire, police, the utility, the wastewater plant, you know, the aquatic center as well, I mean, there's five or six locations, I think I can count, where the city's probably paying for internet currently, and we could bring that in either as a backup to your current connections, or basically replace those current connections and reduce the cost of the internet to the city. Either way, if the connection is available, you can use it as a primary or a... Either way, if the connection is available, you can use it as a primary or a backup. Uh, and then also we would, uh, propose to pay rent in the amount of twelve hundred dollars per year for access to that space. Electrical usage is very low for our particular equipment. On an average site, we're actually around fifty to sixty kilowatt hours per month. Um, here, we could, you know, be using up to a hundred kilowatt hours. As an example, the average, like our office in town here in Main Street uses about seven hundred kilowatt hours per month. So our actual equipment on the water tower will use less than a, than a hundred. So much, much less than an average family-sized home. Uh, so with that low usage, usually the, the entity or the farmer or something that we're leasing from usually includes the power in that instead of metering it separately. Basically, that's, uh, that's our proposal and I'm ready to entertain any questions you guys might have. Uh, we are on forty-five different tower sites right now. Usually it's not in front of a council. It's usually with me and the private farmer, so it's a little different. I'm kind of a little nervous right now, so, uh, but if you guys have questions, obviously I'm ready to answer.
I don't really have a question. I just want to bring up something. We were just talking at the last meeting. And that's that three to five years we could be replacing that water tower. I don't want to see a big investment in years, uh, it's gonna cost you again to move it when, if we did do water tower. And it's nothing in stone here. I just want everyone to
Okay.
recall that was said. I, I, I like your proposal. You know, I don't have anything against it. I just wanted everyone to reflect back. And we just talked about that water tower would be taken out if we didn't know that, so.
I did not know that yet.
That would be something that we would, if we decided to do this, that, you know, part of the agreement is that if the water tower goes,
Yeah.
you either move with a new one or.
I think five years would be all right, that it wouldn't, you know,
I think we're.
that it would be down and out.
Well, yeah, any, any terms if you, you know.
Forty-eight dollars in it and then five years, well, no, I gotta spend that to put it on something else. You know, I just want you to be aware of it.
Is there any idea, I mean, would it be replaced on the same site as the current one or a different site?
Probably have to be constructed first, I imagine.
Yeah, to keep the capacity in the system.
The way it sounds, we'd look for something that could see Manorville.
No, I, ideally, it would be very close.
Okay.
For about two and a half million dollars, we'll name it Minnesota Wi-Fi.
Name a bargain.
That covers the numbers we talked about last time.
That's the cost of the new water tower nowadays, two and a half million?
Just, you know, that's, that's a possible risk, but probably a really small one for a five-year window, but that's a possible risk.
No, yeah, and obviously any contract that's worked out, you guys have way more power than I do. So if the tower needs to come down, you guys have that rate to break that contract with enough notice to us, really.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just gonna ask one thing. Is it, what's the possibility, we're putting something on a tower, you know, like, is there any damage it can create? I mean, more and more cities are looking at that. Was that something?
Yeah, it's definitely common practice. I did provide Teresa with some of my recommendations on this proposal. Maybe I'll just go through them with the council. I don't see, I'm assuming you have it. So one is the amount that's currently being proposed. Uh, the city had an existing area with Verizon, I think was paying about a thousand dollars a month. So it ends up being about thirteen thousand dollars a year was income coming in from Verizon, which obviously significantly more than what Darren's proposing here today. Uh, obviously, the Wi-Fi probably wasn't included in that agreement, so I think that is some value, but obviously you as a council need to make that decision. Electrical usage should be considered in any agreement. Uh, how much electrical cost is that gonna be? Because that's proposed to be cost incurred by the city. Uh, so we recommend that you consider that. Uh, we also do recommend, myself and Mr. Brad for the new water supervisor, recommend that we review the details of what's being proposed. We have a ladder. There's OSHA requirements involved, so just want to make sure that any installations are, are up to what we're looking for. Uh, but it is common practice. That's stuff that we typically review, uh, such things that we've actually done with Minnesota Wi-Fi before. And we also include that any, the Adams guys has talked about any relocations, modifications required by the city or relocation, that if we take the tower down, that that Minnesota Wi-Fi is expensive, assuming we give them proper notice. Uh, I'm assuming it'd be agreeable to Minnesota Wi-Fi. So. Uh, so there's just a couple of things that we recommend that you consider with any approval tonight. And then I would assume we would develop a agreement, a lease agreement with Minnesota Wi-Fi and then I assume have the city attorney review that, so.
Right, that would, yes, that would be, and then if you are interested, then it would instruct staff to move forward and put together an agreement that you would approve at a future meeting.
Yep, I, I'm sorry, I just, I'll comment. I agree with all those. That, that makes perfect sense to protect the city. Um, just comparing to the cellular carriers Verizon and T-Mobiles on your other water tower here, we are not a cellular carrier. Uh, Verizon has a hundred and thirty million customers and their annual revenue last year was a hundred and ten billion dollars. Uh, they, they can afford a thousand dollars a month and we cannot, so.
But Darren's equipment's bigger too, right?
Yeah, their cellular antennas generally are, correct me, six to eight feet tall usually.
Yeah, they're usually bigger.
Yeah, and then our antennas are, you know, a foot and a half, like sixteen to eighteen inches tall and, and much less wind load. So what they had up there looked a lot bigger than what we would have up there. So we use less space. We also can't afford to pay as much as they do, which is why we try to propose, you know, free service. That's easier for us to do than pay a thousand dollars a month, so.
I, I do have some comparable information. Verizon has approached, um, the city of Blaineboro about providing that a booster and those are more in the price range than what, um, Darren is talking about for Wi-Fi than what they pay for their cellular.
I think those are more, they call them small cells, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
They're just trying to get closer to the customer down in town where everybody is.
Just like a street light.
Yeah, basically. You have a little can 10 is what they call it, right, on a pole, utility pole.
Installed.
Okay, yeah.
What's, um, that hundred kilowatt hours, how much is that?
I, I will work that out with Todd. That's one of my notes is to, um, to work that out with Todd. And, um, we will check the city ordinance. I don't know that we can actu, we would need to meter the electricity. I'm fairly certain, so then we would need to make a determination, um, about whether you would charge based on the actual usage or maybe do a catch-up at the end of the year or something like that, so.
Okay.
But we will need to meter that electricity. We don't provide any power without a meter. Do that. We try not to provide.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
We need a motion on this to.
No, if you just, if there's a non-oral, can finally move forward?
Have staff come back with a recommendation?
Okay, excellent.
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you.
Uh, H Mayor's report. First Buxton update. I don't have a lot on that this week. Our next contact with them, I believe, is the end of next week.
Make that.
So I'll have more at the next, the first meeting in May. We have more details. Comp plan update, uh, put together a work group, um, and planning a meeting is at May fifteenth? You had texted me about that, so.
Yes, so May fifteen would be pretty much an all-day, um, event for, quite jokingly, a whole work group. Um, they would meet with staff, they would tour the city, um, and then I believe we'd kind of just wrap up to take that with, uh, with the work group meeting.
Okay.
Okay. And that work group is gonna consist of, uh, some folks in planning and zoning. It's Colin Tinley, Dwayne Burton, Sheldon Torkelson, Koi Borbstrom, uh, myself, Teresa, uh, Chuck Coleman, Mark Matuska from the school, Melissa Ferris, Joel Fitch, and Gerald Geese. So that is the, kind of the core work group. I had sent out a bunch of emails, made a bunch of phone calls. I get a lot of response. I had some people contact me. So this is the group that's gonna be doing a lot of the work to get it going. We call and allow people to be involved after that, so hopefully all six thousand people will be involved in some way. Uh, number three, liquor committee. Uh, I just wanted to thank Kathy, Teresa, Matt Bradford, Matt Bradford and Derek McMerchie. I have tapped those two from the community to come in and be a sounding board for Kathy on the summer liquor hours, uh, July first with the whole Sunday sales, that type of thing. So I just wanted to thank them and Matt and Derek for coming in and volunteering some time. Uh, the liquor store starting July first, or about there, is gonna be eleven to three on Sundays.
Yep.
And a few of the hours during the week will be tweaked to make up for those hours. So we'll have something coming back to us and we, we have to change our ordinance or we don't have to.
No, I, actually, our ordinance will accommodate the eleven to three on Sunday.
Okay, all right. So I just want to thank them for coming and doing that. And then the emergency services committee update, uh, police chief and the fire chief are gonna get together and get that committee together to get things started there and let them know what their expectations are and what kind of work they can expect and that type of thing. So we should be hearing from them the next month or so once, uh, the two chiefs figure out what they're looking for. And I, and it's not on here, but I just wanted to thank, I see the posters in the back. So the, the school has a business appreciation breakfast every year where they thank the community for the donations to the school. And I thank the issue of donations to the school from the community. We're a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um, from the community, so it was a great thing. And I think Superintendent Matuska started that the year that he got here. As you said, he knows how the schools always, you know, we get all the booster clubs and everybody coming out with their hand out looking for donations and it was a way to thank the community for that. So they made posters in the city council. I just see the one of myself, I got two from kindergarten. So just want to thank them for that, that good breakfast. And on the I administrator's report.
Right, so we had talked about doing a work session with Tim Miller, your consultant on the rate, electric rate study. Um, he did come back with some dates. Um, I already have a staff person who's not available on the eighth. So both are weekdays. The work session maybe has to be in the evening. I know you had talked about including other things in your work session, but this may just be
Nope, that's fine.
electric rate study. For June sixth and seventh, if there's an indication of what works. I can get ahold of him.
I'm on a tone on the seventh.
Okay, well, now we're down to the sixth. How we doing?
Tuesday. Don't think I got an EDA today. I'm a very evening, I think.
We're gonna do this in the evening.
Evening on the sixth, work for.
Turf.
Turf?
Okay, all right. I'll, I'll set that up in the six p.m. about as soon as you would want it started. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yep. I'll let everybody know once I confirm.
Okay, thank you. Number two.
Yep, the CETA update. I had an opportunity, um, to interview three potential consultants, um, from CETA to work with the city of Casson, um, and I, I did select a candidate who is moving to the area from South Dakota, so it could be a few weeks before she's here on site. I am working with them to have her available by phone for the EDA meeting so she can at least do an introduction to the EDA, uh, at their May second meeting. And then, um, also to participate in the Buxton webinar, um, because a part of her duties will be to utilize that scout, um, software information and work with our local businesses to make sure that we're supporting them with the data that we're, um, acquiring from Buxton. Um, so it could be three weeks before we have her on site, but I will continue to stay in touch with her and involve her electronically if, if there's an opportunity for her to, to be involved.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? On the engineers' report.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. In your council packet is change order number one for the two thousand seventeen street assessment project. See over there, Dan. This change order is to switch out the city hydrants to a new standard that's been requested from the fire department. Uh, what that is, if you go to the fourth page of your packet, there's a new nozzle on the front end of the hydrants there. Uh, you may have seen them in the city of Rochester. The city Rochester's fire department's made the switch. Uh, so the fire department had proposed that switch to us, so we, uh, went to the contractor and the material supplier of the hydrants and said, what's the cost to switch them over? And in the change order, the twenty-four hydrants at four hundred and twenty-eight dollars each to switch them over comes up to about ten thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's what we're proposing, uh, before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um, I guess my, I understand when you dig something out and put something new back in, you may as well upgrade it to the next generation because otherwise in ten years we're gonna have to go back to you and do it all over again. Would this be something we'd want to consider for any new development? We're just gonna put the new ones in versus replacing with the old ones so we can eventually get consistent? It's not gonna be a citywide program at this point?
Correct, so what's currently proposed is, is part of the new reconstruction, we're replacing hydrants, we replace them. Any subdivision moving forward is gonna require these hydrants and they are currently being installed with projects this year.
So it's already on the stuff we're doing for.
Correct, yep. So Blaine's left, uh, Prairie Willows, probably have to talk about that, but, uh, there's a hydrant potentially in Prairie Willows that we'll have to switch out. We're in the process of changing on the private subdivision, so. My understanding from the fire department, these are easy to hook onto and saves them some time and they're not cross-threading the fine threads on the, the pumper valve, the center valves and the hydrants, so.
So then.
Go ahead.
They're obviously a different size, I mean, so isn't it gonna be someone mixed up?
That's my understanding, yep.
Very noticeable.
Correct. I, I think they look kind of funny, to be quite honest with you. It's like a goofy, funny nozzle. I guess they don't look like a traditional hydrant, so.
Then if we replace hydrants down the road, I mean, is there a plan on that? Do they go out soft or?
We currently don't have a plan. There is a way to, to change out the front nozzle. You can actually see it in the, the diagram there. The front nozzle's being unscrewed from the hydrant itself. Uh, so there's a possibility that if you go back and start retrofitting other hydrants that aren't scheduled to be replaced. Uh, we just haven't quite got that far. Uh, it's something for the council to consider in the future.
So it's just an adapter that you put on an existing?
Correct, so if you know the, the front pumper valve, which is a big two and a half inch valve at the front of the hydrant, there's that fine threaded, uh, threads you have to, to screw on. This is a little different attaching system that it kind of half turns on and clicks and, and locks in.
So you don't have to keep spinning?
Correct, and cross-threading and struggling, so. When it's ten below and you got iced up gloves and there's water coming out the hydrant.
So the new hydrants are fit with this fitting?
Correct, already pre-sold.
There is no old style on these new hydrants?
Correct.
So let me ask you this. So is the fire department gonna have to have new nozzles? They're gonna have to carry the old style and the new stuff?
The hoses would be a little different.
Right.
It's just an adapter?
The, our hoses are fit for them.
They are already?
Yeah, the new hydrants, what they're, it's a quarter-turn camlock is what it's called, the style of connection.
Yep.
All our pumps are outfitted with them.
Yep.
Right now, when we get to a fire, we screw the adapter on
Yep.
and then put that nozzle on with it.
You have the adapters already for the old style hydrants.
And it's on all the trucks.
Right.
But it takes, takes a little bit of time off of it to, if you don't happen to thread that, the adapter on. There's a little time.
No, but you have all the hoses already.
Yeah, all the hoses we have fit it, yep.
I take it it's similar to a discharge hose on a, a pump, a wa, like a water pump, you know?
Yeah, discharge hose. It's a, the way it goes together is you blind them up, turn them and then when, it's like a quarter turn and then they lock together and then there's a button on the top and the bottom to unhook them and it locks them in.
So it's like a ratchet lock?
Kind of, yeah.
My only question is, and if you, it's at four hundred and eighty bucks a piece, why wouldn't we just retrofit the hydrants that are there instead of tying the hydrants and like that? It can't cost four hundred and eighty bucks a piece to retrofit them?
Well, I think it is. That's close to the number that's gonna be to retrofit all the hydrants. To switch out the old valves and new valve, to buy a retrofit kit, it goes right in that ballpark.
So this is for the.
Two thousand seventeen street, those third, fourth and fifth projects.
The hydrants, you can't buy hydrants that already have these on?
Uh, we, we are gonna, we're changing the specification of the hydrant to buy a hydrant with that valve already installed. That valve costs a little bit more per hydrant.
Four hundred and eighty dollars?
Four hundred and twenty dollars.
Right, well, I bet, I bet, I'm getting, I get that. I'm just trying, I'm trying to be polite here and say it's, so. This hydrant is four hundred and eighty dollars more than.
Correct, yep.
Time's how many?
Twenty-four.
And how much is the adapter for the existing hydrants?
Uh, I don't know what, what the adapter that we carry on the truck costs.
No, I think.
But to retrofit the old hydrants, Brandon said four hundred and eighty to, to retrofit that, the old-style hydrant to fit to this standard.
If we were to go citywide and start and actually procure the parts to, to do the retrofitting, I think it was around the same amount as opposed to having a hydrant with it, so.
Well, if it's four eighty and the new hydrants are four twenty.
Quote me on that. It, this was in the ballpark, so. And I don't know if we can buy in bulk if we were to do all hu, a couple hundred hydrants in town, I mean.
Four hundred and fifty. Roughly four hundred and fifty.
So, I don't know if we can buy them in bulk and we just, we haven't quite got to that, that point yet on what we're doing. Like, again, it was the fire department request to start switching these over as we go. Obviously, we got a good opportunity now with the replacement of twenty-four of the hydrants. And obviously, the new subdivision idea was to get this change done sooner than later, so.
I, I think it's a good idea. I mean, it's gonna save seconds because new homes doesn't take long for a fire to spread. You're gonna cut time off.
And it's one of those things nobody likes to spend ten thousand dollars unless their house is on fire.
And then they wish to be running under the same.
Well, I, I don't have a problem. I just, I don't sell the dollar sign. I think it makes sense to do it. If these guys want, you know.
Okay. So is there any other discussion on that change order questions?
No.
I understand what we're doing.
Yep.
All right. Uh, I'm on a team to motion to approve the change order for the Street Assessment Project.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Oh, favor said aye.
Aye.
Full same side. Change order approved.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'm moving on to the second item, EDA transition plan there. Uh, there's a professional service agreement in your council packet. Uh, before we get into the service agreement, I did also provide this handout here that has MINDOT sidewalk bed ramp on it. Uh, so maybe I'll talk into that, uh, document and kind of review what the EDA transition plan is. So. Uh, what it, EDA, I'll start first and foremost with the EDA. It stands for Americans with Disabilities Act, which requires the city to make their right of ways in sidewalks, EDA compatible with the EDA laws that were, um, brought to us through the Department of Justice. Uh, and what the EDA transition plan ultimately says is that our, our sidewalks are not EDA compliant. We understand that. Uh, we're making a plan, an EDA transition plan, to upgrade our bed ramps as one, for example, our current construction projects, we would make them EDA compliant. And two, we have a set aside budget item in which we do currently is fifty thousand dollars a year is what's currently budgeted for sidewalk improvements. We have a limited budget, the, the budget I just described. We have a plan in place to make them compliant as the budget allows. So that's what this plan will lay out, uh, the plan in prioritizing the replacements with respect to our budget. Now, so if you flip over to the second, second page, that's number one is to prioritize the replacement because we know we can't replace them all tomorrow. The other item here is if we go after any federal funding associated with any street project, what MINDOT is telling us that the Federal Highway Administration is going to start requiring any local agency, the city of Cassin in this case, may not be approved for Federal Highway Administration funds if they do not have a transition plan or in the process of doing a transition plan. Uh, so when we've talked about potential street projects, Sixteenth Street, Round Road, Highway Fifty-seven, we've talked about at staff level chasing some of this Federal Highway Funds through MINDOT. Uh, so we're setting up the possibility that we secure some of these funds. We don't have any transition plan in place and then we're not able to, to receive these funds. Uh, so that's, that's what MINDOT is telling us. Uh, the other thing is a potential liability. Uh, EDA is on the books. The city is, is supposed to be EDA compliant as much as they can. Uh, there's been some lawsuits, uh, MINDOT being one of them. That's why MINDOT, if you go out on Highway Fifty-seven, they have those nice steel pieces of the truncated domes at all their sidewalks. They've been doing them across MINDOT right away. Uh, because they weren't a lawsuit and they were ordered and came up with the tran- EDA transition plan in order to fix up as many bed ramps as their budget would allow. Uh, so we could potentially be subject to same sort of suit and other towns have experienced that. Uh, so what we do is we go back on this EDA plan and say, we have a plan in place to replace the bed ramps if our budget is limited. So it helps us with any exposure there with a potential lawsuit. And then, of course, maybe the most important reason is we're interested in making the sidewalks more accessible to our disability to citizens. So. Going back to the agreement itself, uh, we do have a agreement in there. There's a fair amount of, of work to be done. We first and foremost have to inventory the bed ramps to kind of see where we're at, prioritize said bed ramps. We're gonna have some public meetings to solicit public input in the plan. And then we'll do a self-evaluation, uh, looking at the pri- those prioritized areas. And then we'll draft the plan, bring it back to the council for more public input. And then we will finalize the plan with you and the council. So we do have currently proposed an hourly estimated fee of twenty-three thousand, six hundred. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. I, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. First, yes, we want to take care of everybody to be able to be mobile around town. Is there a requirement that says the plan has to be this detailed or can we just come up with a document on our own with our city attorney that says, hey, we have a plan. We understand it's an issue. All of our bed ramps don't meet EDA specifications. All new construction will require it. And within our budget of fifty thousand dollars, we're gonna take care of them one at a time until we get them all taken care of. Or does it have to involve, not that I don't want public input, but to have pay you people time to do public meetings to say, what do you think about our bed ramps? I can think about four people that are gonna come in and say, wow, yeah, what is, what's a bed ramp? It just seems like, so I'm, this like twenty-three thousand dollars to come up with a plan to just say what you just told us. We have a plan. If we all say, yep, we have that plan, we're taking care of it. We know it's an issue, let's take care of it.
Sure. Totally understand. We have twenty-two thousand dollars less money to spend for concrete on the ground and fix months.
Yeah, because that'll have to come out of our fifty thousand dollar budget.
Okay.
I can help with the inventory. I don't think there's very many that are legal.
There's not.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I understand they say we have to have a plan and there's a, a room full of cities somewhere just waiting to sue us because somebody doesn't.
Sure.
Somebody does something and it's not up to specification. Sorry, Melanie. And we have to have these plans in order to mitigate the risk going forwards. It cost us a lot more than twenty-three thousand dollars if we don't, right? My question is, does the plan have to be, is there a requirement that the plan has to be this detailed and this much time or can we just adopt a plan? We're aware of it. Is that good enough?
So the, the minimal plan required is what we currently have proposed. There's certain requirements within the EDA transition plan. That requires us to go out there, look at each individual bed ramp and Doug, you're exactly right. Almost none of them are gonna be compliant. But if there's a curb cut and it's a little bit too steep compared to a bed ramp, but there's no curb cut and it's really steep, are we gonna prioritize the bed ramps? That needs to be included in the plan. It just takes time to gather that information. In addition to that, there is sidewalks. We have to prioritize sidewalks. We gotta get somewhat of an idea on the condition of the sidewalks. Is it too steep? Is there too much cross slope? Is there big gaps? Uh, so we need to somehow create a prioritization plan within our plan. We just can't say we're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars a year wherever Charlie and I walk one spring day and mark off, mark off the areas that we're interested in this year. Uh, so it's more than that. The other thing is there's a, um, self-evaluation and then there's a grievance procedure. So we have to, uh, it doesn't make somebody to City Hall to receive said griev- grievance. We have to set up a, a way for citizens to grieve against the city and say, my bed ramp's the worst and I, I, I go to this place every day, et cetera, in the grievance form. Uh, so that's part of the plan. So there's, there's more to, there's a, there's a lot of beef with this plan. I, I, I feel your pain on the, the cost, but the level of effort to get the plan at a minimum level is, is pretty significant. So.
It is when it's fifty percent of the sidewalk budget. You know what I mean? It's a plan.
I understand.
No, thanks. Uh, what, what is your hourly rate?
I'd be per our currently, current city engineer rate.
You gotta have a rough.
Uh, depends on the staff member, of course.
Tom.
Um, well, the, the Tom won't be working on this project.
You pick one in the middle.
Um, go with, uh, as a total composite hour of the eight, go with ninety-five on this project.
So that gives us two hundred and forty-eight hours. Is that how you guys, I mean, obviously I do bidding and everything else, but uh, trying to see where we're getting in our bank for a buck here. You're gonna put out two hundred and forty, uh, forty-eight hours. It's, you know, a month and a half. Is it, uh, I mean, I'm just trying to get to the nuts of the whole, so we come up with twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars. And this is an estimated fee too. Right. Could be more. Well, I'm not, that is gonna.
Less.
Well. It ain't gonna be more. I, I, I mean, that's what I'm getting to next. I mean. Put a cap? Yeah. Gotta have some sort of control on it.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know. I'm just kind of curious. How you come up with twenty-four thousand dollars? I've got, how do you, I mean, do you have an idea of how many ramps there are? Do you gotta spend how much time on them? Because like on the ones on Manorville Avenue, those are all EDA compliant by the state, right?
In theory. But that, that's, it's not our jurisdiction. So we, uh.
So we don't have to.
Yeah, we will not be completing those bed ramps.
Anything to tell you or anything right or wrong?
Right.
Right.
So we won't need to do that. I mean, it's how many, are we talking two hundred and fifty ramps or we, how many we? Did you get this from comparing to a like city or?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
I can tell you there's other larger cities, the city for ex- Rochester example, um, they have a very detailed transition plan where they go out and inventory and shoot grades in and then do a big calculation on it and prioritization and we just didn't go to that level.
Just let me ask my question. How did you, how did you come up with the twenty-four thousand dollars?
So I, I don't have it in the documents here. We do what we call work plan outlines. So we do every staff member per our rate table, which is an agreed to as a city engineer number. Um, allocate hours for each task within this plan. And even if we go through the scope, we can see a fair amount of tasks that are involved. Public hearings, visually going out, looking at all the bed ramps, measuring the cross slopes of every sidewalk, signet, somewhat prioritizing then coming with a map. Putting that map together, showing what is priority one, two and three, soliciting public input, changing that map, changing the priority, priority, coming up with the form to have the grievance, the procedure, um, et cetera. Then obviously presenting the plan at the city council, revising the plan again and finding the plan. Just takes a lot of time.
Now, Brandon, uh, this might be a silly question, but didn't you say we either had to have this plan or be working toward it? Or if we were to say, yeah, we're interested, we'll look at it at a later date?
Sure. So that is what MINDOT is telling us because this has been a change in the, the EDA transition plan used to be fifty employees or more. Any agency with fifty employees or more had to have this EDA transition plan already in place. But now they're just trickling it down. That's what MINDOT is telling us. So we're, we're trying to prevent the spots where we would be looking at federal funding and not be able to secure, you know, hundreds or millions of dollars in federal funding for any street projects.
We had this conversation. We didn't have anything budgeted for it, so we're interested in looking at it further next year. If you could put something to budget for it.
That's where I was going. Are there any projects coming up for the next nine months we're gonna be applying for any federal dollars?
Yeah. This is adopted transition plan or substantially working towards their, towards their transition plan. So it is something, I know where you're going with this, that we could delay this work until we start, uh, chasing some of the federal money.
Well, excuse me, Melanie, from your perspective on this, what, what's our risk if we wanna, yeah, we're interested, we just don't have a budget item for this right now in, in April? We'll consider it for our budget for, we'll include it in our budget for two thousand and eighteen. Would that be intent that we want to do something? But.
I don't think it's gonna be, it's gonna comply with, you know, substantially working towards it. But if you're, I'm less concerned if there aren't projects within the next eight months that you're gonna be actively seeking those funds for. If there are, then I don't think, you know, tabling it is.
So if there are, it's something we want to do. If there's not, there's not a big risk to the city by waiting to do it on two thousand and eighteen budget. So is it something that if there was a project coming up that we said, hey, is all, any big project, we're gonna ask for federal funding? It's not gonna be, hey, we're gonna do something next week, let's ask for federal funding. It's gonna be part of the plan that, hey, we're gonna plan this for October or something came up, we have to do it and there's federal funds available. We can always come back and revisit this at that time that now we are going forward with it from somewhere. And just wait till the next budget cycle to consider it.
That, is it opening the city up to risk that is foolish?
I would agree with that. And I don't see it opening the city up to risk of something foolish.
Yeah.
But I, I would definitely want to see something in the next budget so we don't, you know.
Right.
Pushing it off and.
Do we have a plan for sidewalk replacement and repair for a budget of fifty thousand this year?
Uh, myself and Mr. Bradford are working on that. Uh, we actually looked at Walks Main Street, uh, last week. I mean, looked at some of the, the worst spots on Main Street and looking at investing that fifty thousand dollars in Main Street, including some pedestrian ramps in addition to some sidewalk, just straight up sidewalk replacements. So. We've, uh, we've found some areas to invest that money.
And these that you were gonna do or something that you're gonna draw up? So I mean, we're working toward it even though we don't have a plan there. We're, you know, we're actively.
Correct. Any, anytime we would touch a bed ramp with any of our projects, uh, we would be looking at getting them up to complacency. And if we can't physically do it with the grade restrictions, that we would document that we, we were not able to make it compliant. We did the best we can because maybe like a doorway or something entering in a whole building. So.
And the new project areas, it's gonna be required.
Correct. Yep.
So that's intent that we are, understand the rule.
Correct.
And we are working towards it because we're requiring it on new construction and anything we're doing with our annual repair budget. What can you do with twenty-five thousand, whatever dollar amount of money with less of repairs on Main Street this year and start it now? Another option.
I like the way you just sold. I, I think we're, I think that we should table it to further discussion.
They did say that, that did some pretty good curpers on Main Street.
Oh, yeah.
Back of the curb tire design.
See, I just wanted to, I mean, we run into things like this sometimes where I don't know if you have an end date on this, but you know, we have a FEMA plan in progress and it didn't necessarily get done in the year that we even budgeted for it. So if some of this is coming out of sidewalk budget, why can't we lessen it by about ten thousand, assuming that if we start the transition plan now, it's billed as the work is done. And maybe half of it gets done this year and half next. And at least that lessens the impact of it. And, and we don't know when it'll get done, but we'll have started it. We'll be in progress. That might help with meeting that goal of substantially.
Substantially working towards.
It's a step further. So maybe we say, go ahead and start it, but you know, as time allows for the year. I mean, Brandon, when did you think it would be done? Then if we can kind of plan on half the work this year, half next, then we have about forty thousand actually going toward sidewalks.
Uh, that brings a good point. We're planning on doing it this summer, but maybe if we're under contract with the understanding, we maybe do some of the fieldwork this summer, at least before snow sets in, we can work on in the winter. Because we're under contract, it may help our liability.
So if we approve five hundred dollars tonight, you just start it?
I think you want to pass. I don't think there's a work in that one.
The other thing is, is Charlie, how much, how much impact that gonna have on what you plan on doing this year on that fifty thousand if you guys are up to forty? Well, yeah, I mean, how much is.
Basically, why we're doing this this year is trying to get a plan. Is, is last year, you're, you're chasing sidewalk concrete guy to get the bid around and saying, we want this little piece, this and this. We didn't use up the money. Where if we get a plan where downtown is bad, we can just figure out a set them out and say, there you go. You got till the end of August to get it done. You know, but yet there's room if we need them to go over there and fix some spots or whatever.
I don't think you even used half of it last year. They did.
No.
Time being random.
Yeah.
So it may, I'll add on the Charlie thing. We're proposing a little different sidewalk project this year. Uh, last year it was a unit price with no scope of work, no map for the bed ramps. Uh, this year we're proposing to create the unit price bid, but also have a map showing, hey, here's forty thousand of the fifty thousand dollar sidewalk work that we're looking for. Save ten thousand in case anything comes up on Charlie's end. Uh, then we'll fill in maybe the last ten thousand. But, uh, tighten up a little bit on giving the contractor clear direction out of the gate. So it doesn't come, become a burden on Charlie to tell him every day where, where to go and where, where things pop up. So. That's one of the things that we honed in a little bit on. So.
So do you have an idea on the Main Street repairs of what type of tens of thousands of dollars are rolling into up there or?
Total or for this year? This year we're looking at investing the whole fifty thousand in Main Street.
I think he's, you wonder if that's a fixed main street?
No.
I know.
I'd almost like to rather see if we're, you know, if we're gonna, I'd still like to table it, put the fifty thousand in the Main Street and then push forward with this next year myself. I mean, uh, Main Street's a lot of traffic up there for us.
Are you making a motion?
Recommendation right now. I'm just, well, I'm tired of discussing. I make, I make a motion, we table it, we take, leave our street budget, let the guys fix Main Street and then look at this next year.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to delay. For the two thousand and eight budget year for the EDA eighteen. For the EDA compliant project. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, questions, comments? Okay. All in favor said aye.
Aye.
Full same side? Carrie's. Thanks, Brandon, for the information. We do value your opinion, but I'm probably gonna push this forward a little bit.
I'm proud.
Number three.
Three, Transstation Improvement District, there's nothing in your council packet tonight for that. This is something that myself and staff talked about and has been brought today, was how do we make development pay for development? We've had that conversation before on WAC and SAC fees and whatnots. So nothing formal tonight, just kinda looking for a consensus on potentially moving a Transstation Improvement District study forward. But what ultimately it is, it would be a plan similar to WAC and SAC that is paid, goes to a special fund to ultimately generate some revenue for the city to upgrade roads that aren't as part of a subdivision. It's typically like an old township road, so if we're plating along the township road, fees are coming to the city as those plats are coming forward in the residential subdivision world. Then at some point when that road is upgraded, there's some funds there to help offset the funds that the city would be incurring, or development is causing, if you will, by the plating to adjacent township roads. Something that we've implemented in other towns, and it's worked, worked well. And it's something that I just wanted to bring forward to the town site, see if you're interested in pursuing that and hearing more about it. Yeah, that's what I had, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so would this be something, if we were interested in hearing about it, would we have a go-to planning and zoning first? Does that be part of our, would that be part of our zoning ordinance as far as the development or...
No, there'll be more fees and...
I would say there's more council.
Okay, right. Any interest in hearing more?
I'd like to hear some more about it, to see how we can improve our roads down the road.
Do you have some, if you're doing this, has this been implemented at other cities? Can you bring some of that examples with you of kind of what they're charging and what's...
Yeah, so, I'll just tell you right now, if you don't mind, Coe. So we implemented this in the city of Byron. And what happens, at the time of plating in the city of Byron, I'll take a big step back. They, the city of Byron looked at their twenty-five and fifty-year service district and said, all right, the city of Byron's gonna be this big in twenty-five and fifty years. What township roads and what regional roads do we need to build as subdivisions are being built? Because what we're, city struggles, struggles is with the regional roads that multiple subdivisions are plating up against. How do we upgrade them? The township road on the west side of town, Sixteenth Street is one of them. And it's really hard for cities to recuperate that cost, and they did make development pay for development. So we looked at the service district, ran a quick analysis on the total cost to make all those roads good over the next twenty-five, fifty years, upgranted the appropriate streets, and said, how does that work out per acre? And the city said, well, if we implement a Transstation Improvement District fee of twenty-eight hundred dollars per acre, is what the Byron settled on, that will get us a lot closer to upgrading these roads into city streets as city's projects, as development occurs. And the city would still have the option to upgrade those roads when they felt the time was right.
What type of, what did developers say about that when that fee was tacked on?
Still developing, so.
I mean, what type of, I mean, there must have been something that was, I'm sorry, they're not just gonna say, huh, that's a problem. They're gonna say, what, you know, what is it for, what if it doesn't get used?
Well, definitely is used, because I don't, I don't believe it's a hundred percent of the true cost that we looked at for the, for the true cost of the roadway. It's very hard to recoup a hundred percent of development, but it definitely helps offset the cost. Well, again, from the development side, as long as the numbers work for the developer, you're gonna develop. The, the bigger thing is, I think the developers appreciate the fact that these roads were being built, and it was being built by the city, and everybody was on the same playing field of the per-acre charge. So one developer maybe didn't build half the road, or drew partial subdivision, and the next developer has to build the next half, and we have piecemeal larger collector's streets that need to be definitely built appropriately. So I, I leave you with those as a positive, and they're still developing, so this is, I haven't shoved the, shoved the spigot off. The other thing to consider, the city roster has fees way larger than anything we'd probably ever get to at the city of Cass or city of Byron level. So we're gonna continue to see development coming this way, so. You got, you got a developer here in the room, or an engineer in the room, so maybe you can shed some light on it.
If you get Rochester fees out here, you'll shut it down completely.
Don't disagree.
Don't even plan on that.
But the developer's just gonna roll that into their...
Exactly.
Lot cost to the...
It would all get pulled in.
Yeah.
I mean, if, see if they were interested in more information?
Yeah.
If there's no decision, but at least...
Yeah, yeah, no, it's...
So it, it goes to homeowners and costs when they, they build a lot, but it's not the current. Citizens aren't footing the bill for private development. That's the conceptual...
And we, and you mentioned the road to the west of town here. And we've developed all on that now, and it's a gravel, unimproved road. Who's gonna pay for that? Everybody in town's gonna pay for it.
Exactly.
So, I mean, so there is a, going back to that fairness thing, you know, ways. So I'm interested to hear more information about it. I'm saying I'm a supporter of this improvement, but at least hear more information.
Yep.
So if you guys wanna put together something, more information on comparables and that type of thing? And number four?
South Manorville Avenue project, they did nothing in your council packet. Lana, you asked me the question where kind of we were at, so I'm just giving you guys a quick update on where we're at. We're, we're trying to wrap up the last petition waiver agreement that was proposed to that project for the adjacent benefiting property owners. So we're in negotiation on that last agreement. And we're still moving this, the recommendation from Theresa was to move the plan forward regardless of that agreement being currently signed. So I'm moving forward with the final plans and could have it before you, the council, to approve the plans and all the bids in about a month, is what we're...
Faster?
Just gets more expensive longer paying out there.
It still seems a pretty attractive bid, so.
But that'll change.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
I'm, I'm tapping.
Oh, I know they are, I know they are.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Brandon, appreciate your time. Uh, city personnel, we added one there, staffing went a little bit of an issue that came up there.
Right. So we do, we do have an employee who's involved with the work, with the compensation situation, and will not be returning to us over the summer and was a key part of our part staff during the summer months. So we do need to fill the gaps in the DAP for that position. I did make a call, I had indicated at the last meeting that we had two qualified candidates for the part-time public work position. I did reach out to the second candidate, he has not returned my call. I then got a hold of a temporary staffing agency. They gave me an idea that it would be nine hundred to a thousand fifty a week. They take care of all the payroll tax, the work of compensation. They are working through the, whether or not they can provide someone who can drive a mower, ride on a mower. So I don't know if this is a perfect solution, but it's, it's a potential solution. And because we need someone sooner than later, I'm looking for approval to go ahead and work with a staffing agency to provide us with some help in that price range that's quoted.
This, this is due November first, right, at the earliest?
Yes, my understanding that that individual has their doctor's approval to be out through November first.
Okay. I guess personally, I, if we have to, I met with Charlie yesterday, we got, they need the help in full-time personnel. I like the idea of the temporary agency to take care of all the extra stuff with the employment, and we don't have to worry about unemployment daily. That's not on us. If we hire somebody full-time for four months, wherever it be, we aren't gonna be on for some tail wagging down the road with unemployment. So my opinion, if, if we're gonna have to do this, if we can use the temp agency, we can get a temp agency, we let somebody ride on a piece of equipment. My personal opinion is that's the direction we should go.
Do, do we know how many weeks that we want this temporary person?
Well, I think it'll depend on the rain schedule.
And that's nice of the temp agency, is if we can cut it early.
Yeah.
How much was it?
Nine hundred and fifty dollars.
A week?
A week.
And that's everything?
Right, I'm just comparing it to what I've hired from, so I just... I mean, that's twenty-three, twenty-five bucks an hour.
Do, do other question taxes and everything? Well, do you have it in the, what do we have in the budget?
Well, the, so the individual who would otherwise be collecting a salary from the hoodie for it now, right.
It's only collecting one-third.
One-third? Do it sure as. Right, correct.
Okay.
So, that one, the one-third, it'd be, I heard that earlier.
Free my own machine? She doesn't even have a driver's license.
You don't need one to drive a lawnmower.
Oh, wasn't that a lawnmower?
It'd be less than the full-time guy and the part-time guy at fifteen dollars now. So it's worth, it's not costing us anymore.
Right, with all the taxes and everything. And the nice thing is, I'm, there's no employment, there's no employment at the end of it, and we have to worry about when...
And if they don't work out, they're gone.
Right.
No questions asked.
And if things dry up the first of September, and Charlie determines he doesn't need any more, we're done. We don't have to fill that.
Do we have to tie them into this mower?
No, no, no.
No, I did talk about other, I did talk to her about other work.
About blacktop?
Right.
Basically, if you're at your disposal, he or she would be at your disposal to do whatever he can to do.
Hire a labor versus a lawnmower?
Well, I, I gave her the...
To then have to specify.
I talked, I talked to them about the, you know, she said, what can they be doing? And I kinda covered the whole thing. They would not be taking down trees, for sure. But as long as both feet are planted on the ground, that would be good. Was the indication that I got.
Okay. I'm comfortable with Teresa working with Charlie to determine what they need with the temp agency. See what they need there. I like the flexibility of it versus hiring somebody just for four months or three months or whatever it may be.
What do you need of us?
Um, just approval to go ahead and work that out, because if, if we can work out the details, we could get somebody started, you know, beginning of next week.
Soon.
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, your motion and a second to approve Teresa and Charlie working to get somebody from the temp agency as soon as they can, to help with any type of allowed activities by the...
Yeah.
For that nine hundred to a thousand fifty a week?
Yep. Okay, first and a second, all in favor, sit aye?
Aye.
All the same side? L Attorney's Report.
In your packet, there was a letter that was provided by Rick Bart, who is the IBEW union representative. It's essentially notice that they, the union desires to renew and amend the union to, the union agreement with the city. It does not have any specifics about what they would like to amend with regard to the agreement, but just that notice that they do want to engage in some negotiations with the city prior to entering, entering into the next union contract. Teresa had reached out to a firm that had, she was aware of, that specializes in labor negotiations. And that is the other letter that was included in the packet, just to give some idea of what that, those fees might be, if that's something that the city would like to pursue. So she's just giving you some options and some information about that. I don't know, Teresa, that there's anything that we're looking for them to, to act on tonight. Just kind of some information for you.
Okay, so I read through this, and I'm happy to again. So they're wanting to do some contract language negotiation before we actually enter into the actual contract negotiation? They wanna talk about language first, amending the agreement?
Correct.
And what's the timeline on that to be complete? Because we have a, we have a deadline to have the actual contract negotiation done by the end of the year?
Well, that's when our current union agreement ends.
Right.
So if we don't have a new agreement at that point, that will continue to carry on until we enter into a new agreement.
So what's our timeframe on this? As far as engaging them to say, okay, we're ready to sit down and negotiate the language they wanna change?
I, I don't know if they have a...
You know, I believe that they are interested in the outcome of the salary study that we've, that we're completing as a requirement of our MNPEA agreement, so...
So we, we don't have to make any decisions at this time?
Right, I, I don't believe that they wanna move forward, or it would be my understanding they would want that salary study before we... Do we know when that will be completed? Or estimated?
Yeah, we're looking at, maybe presenting the council in July with finalization, second meeting or first meeting.
So we've got the information.
Right.
We can sit on this until then, until we get that salary study back and then engage at that point.
In what way are we obligated to share that with them?
In what way are we obligated to share?
We're fans of that study, aren't we?
Salary study?
I think it's part of the contract.
It's part of the contract.
We were required to do it based on the contract.
Not this union we worked, of the other union.
The MNPEA.
Yeah, we're, let's not get ahead of ourselves.
Right, right. I, I would not think of a case where that would be protected information of any kind. It would be public data that anyone could request.
All they pay for the sheets.
I believe that, correct. Any statutes that would allow that to be considered non-public. Right. It was off the top of my head.
Okay. We'll cross that picture when we get to it.
Yeah.
But yeah, it sounds like it's gonna help us pay this home.
I did a little research of my own, I'm a lawyer to help with bargaining. The name that came back to me pretty big, someone good, it's the one we use for arbitration, it's Susan Hanson. We're familiar with her, and I didn't have a good report on that, or how good.
Okay. We'll sit on this information and share that with staff, and we'll go from there.
Here again?
Okay, so that's it for that one?
That's it for that one.
I am gonna go, we tabled number two, so number three is a closed session. I'm gonna close the meeting under statute thirteen B dot zero five, subsection three C, attorney-client privilege.
And we do have to say what we're closing it for and so on. I'm gonna just tell you, and I'm gonna have you read it, because you have to be the one that's seven. So we're considering developing or talking about an offer to consider purchasing some property. And that, and it's the eleven-acre parcel that is south of Highway fourteen and west of the...